Everyone on?
All right, Kim.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for your patience. At this time, I would like to call to order the town council meeting for November 20, 2024. And at this time, our first item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. And councillor, if you would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councillor.
Have you ever counted the stars on that flag?
So before the next item on the agenda, councillors, I would accept a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session because it's determined that the indulgence of misinformation likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board and/or render a proposed action ineffective.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, councillor Doran.
Second.
Thank you, councillor Doran. If you can call the roll, please.
Councillor Glazier, aye. Councillor Matina, aye. Councillor Dornblatt, aye. Councillor White.
Upstayed.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Ward.
Aye.
Councillor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero to one.
Excellent. Okay. Item number three on the agenda is roll call. Welcome. All councillors are here, present and accounted for. And next item on the agenda, item four, is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:05. Item six on the agenda is town council to consider nominations, appointments and elections. And the one item we have is...
Skip minutes.
Oh, skip minutes?
Yeah.
Did I correctly? Oh, so sorry about that. Scrolled too far. Sorry. Item five on the agenda, folks, is to consider acceptance of the minutes. And we have one set of minutes, and that is the minutes for November 6, 2024, town council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I will make the motion.
Thank you, councillor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Dornblatt. Any discussion or corrections to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, if you can call the roll, please.
Councillor Glazier, aye. Councillor Matina.
Aye.
Councillor Dornblatt.
Aye.
Councillor White.
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Ward.
Aye.
Councillor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent. Now, item six on the agenda, to consider nominations, appointments and elections. The one item we have is the appointment of a town council representative to the USA 250 steering group. And I'm not quite sure what we need to do with that.
So, the committee has invited one member of the council to serve on the committee. And at the last meeting, it seemed like there was a number of individuals interested. So instead of one of us suggesting, we're going to let you guys all get out and see who wants to serve on it. And then at such time, you'll make a motion to appoint councillor X to the committee.
Okay. Councillor Matina.
I would like to make a motion to appoint councillor Ward to that committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, excellent. Before we vote on it, is there anybody else who would like to put their hat into the medical ring or seat on this? I would love to do it, but I think councillor Ward would do a fantastic job. Is there any other discussion on that appointment? Councillor Ward, would you like to be on that committee?
I would. I just wanted to know, like, when is it? Like, when do they meet?
Wednesday night.
A second.
Second. Opposite of our meetings.
Okay. Then I can do it.
Excellent.
And there's always an opportunity that we could offer them, alternate in case.
Excellent.
Because I don't think they're going to turn anybody down. So if the chair were interested...
But I mean, if it's one of us and it's on a Wednesday night that we meet, we could...
Well, yeah, no, unless you...
I could see off.
Yeah, no, no.
There you go.
He was saying alternative.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Councillor Glazier, aye. Councillor Matina.
Aye.
Councillor Dornblatt.
Aye.
Councillor White.
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone.
Aye.
Councillor Ward.
Aye.
Councillor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Item seven on the agenda this evening is the report of the town manager and department reports. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, town manager.
Thank you, madam chair. The first item is that the October completes the first quarter of the fiscal year. The operating budget is 41% expended, which is normal, as you can see, for the monthly expenses. Reasoning is one of the large expenses is our contribution to capital reserve funds. So you move it from the budget into the effort to the capital reserve funds. Nothing's out of the ordinary at this time, and revenues continue to align with our projections. I did want to provide the council with a schedule for town meeting 2025. Today, the superintendent of schools and I met with the chair of the budget committee. There's no objection. We'll schedule delivery of session on February 1st, 2025, at the high school at 9:00 a.m. That gives us, in case of a snow day, we could always have it on the 8th. We have that full week to do that. As you know, the council approved the budget and was submitted to the budget committee for the 15th. And then all these dates are set by state law.
When was the date?
February 1st.
The first, Saturday.
Yeah, we always do it on Saturday.
It's also listed in the euro...
In report.
In your town report.
Yep. So if there's no objection, we'll go with those dates. Finally, another scheduling. If there's no objection, the first of January, the first meeting in January is also the first of January. So we would bump their meeting from the first to the 8th, which is the second. So we'll have meetings on the second and third Wednesday of January instead of the first. So you'll be missing the first meeting. But, yeah, I just wanted to, if there's no objection, we'll do the same when it comes to scheduling. That's all I have to tell you.
So 8th and 15th?
Yeah.
Oh, so not the 22nd? We're not moving the...
We would go the second and the third in January.
Okay, so we're not moving...
Not moving all of it, just the first.
All of it. Oh, okay. Would it be better to have a week in between, just to cover the month better?
I think at that point in time, no, because it's budget time, that if we have a special meeting, we'd have the ability to have a third one.
Okay.
So I think knowing these two are set up, we can act quicker if something comes up from the budget committee.
Excellent. Any questions for the town manager? Any questions or comments on the October department reports?
Yeah, so I learned a new term, BOLO, which I had to look up. For those of you who aren't familiar, it's be on the lookout. And I noticed a concerning thing with respect to the police. If you remember last year, just around Thanksgiving time, they were shooting turkeys. And now this year, just before Thanksgiving, we find chasing turkeys once again. And I just wonder if the pay raise isn't really needed down there because they can't even get turkeys in the police department, you know? Central Street is one that we're talking, I've been talking about reversing to get a second parking spot. Is that something that would be related to the parking study, or is that an...
No, the highway safety committee is going to be meeting in the next couple of weeks to review it. It's different than the parking, the transportation committee. Highway safety is a statutory one. It's mainly staff. One member, the chair of the council, and one member of the public who is also an engineer. I've sent down an email to see if we could schedule something for the week after Thanksgiving to review it, and the engineer's looking at it as well.
So that would include Central Street or...
That is Central Street. That's all we're doing is looking at that.
Oh, okay.
That's the highway safety committee's only agenda topic.
Okay, so just for your information, I'm interested in it to get a second parking spot. Because right now, the second parking spot has been blocked because you can't come out of that driveway behind Crack Skulls and turn down without hitting something. And the number of people that tell me how great that parking spot is, I mean, just not knowing who I am or that I contributed to it, they just, you know, it's just... And then finally, I wanted to just thank the, all the participants in the Halloween Haunt. It was really good this year, not only at the rec center, but, you know, I was cruising around the town. Every place had like a little candy thing, and I thought it, there was a huge amount of community support for that, and it was great to see.
Thank you, councillor Blackstone. Any other comments on this month's department report? I'll echo councillor Blackstone's comments and just also extend my gratitude to the public works department for all the work that folks are doing on the extension to the sidewalk. I know there were some delays, and just really very grateful for all the things that they're doing to extend and enhance the walkability of this part of the town. Okay. Seeing no other comments on the department reports, the report of the town manager, we'll move on to resolutions and ordinances in the second reading. And this evening, there are four.
Committee reports?
Oh, sorry. God, I'm missing all the things. This is what happens when I don't have a piece of paper. I am so glad to have people who know what's going on. Please forgive them, folks. Okay. You are quite right, councillor Dornblatt. The next item on the agenda really should be committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
I have one, hence my paying attention to it. The transportation committee met last Wednesday. We had opportunity, we basically spent the entire time reviewing two topics. In support of the revision of the transportation chapter of the master plan, we utilizing two nicely sized maps, colored maps too. We reviewed the trail network and sidewalk and pedestrian bicycle network in town, identifying opportunities and gaps that might be, might be ones that we would want to address to close, or are there ways to, how could we close them? Could one close them? So that was a very, very good session. I thought that was quite fruitful as well. And then we also reviewed and discussed the possibility of developing a roadway categorization for town roadways to, essentially by function, volume, you know, type of user. So what would a neighborhood street look like? What other, and what can we communicate to developers, for example, around that? What would we expect a connector street to look like? How are different users served by, by the way the roadway is constructed? And how does the roadway support the speed limit that is assigned to it? So that the speed limit is not just something that's communicated by a sign on the side of the road, but is essentially something that you absorb just by being in the roadway and you understand this is either a slow road, or this is a place where I can, where it's safe and I have a good line of sight to drive a faster speed maybe. So that was essentially the meeting, and we're looking forward to continuing those, that work on the transportation chapter at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, councillor Dornblatt.
Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Councillor Glazier.
Arts, culture and tourism net. And we met with the Stafford Regional Planning Commission, and I think we'll be meeting with them every meeting now for the next few months to work on the master plan process. We talked about the lights that you may have noticed were installed at the mural. The commission had fundraised $250 of money towards the lights, and then the town paid for the rest of it, which they were grateful for, and I am grateful for. We talked about the chess tables that if you were there for the mural unveiling, there was some chess tables that are going to be put in there. We voted to push the delivery of those tables off until the spring so that we can make sure that when they are put in, the ground is ready for it, and it's, it won't potentially be snowy because the people that are bringing it are going to set it and forget it, and we're not going to be able to easily move thousand pound tables out there. The, they, we also voted on some calendars, t-shirts, hats with the mural design on it. So the calendar has a bunch of photos from people who submitted them to the, to have them around the border of the mural. And then the main image on the calendar is the mural. And then the hats, sweatshirts, some other things that will be coming. So that, I'm really excited about that, and I'm already going to order the calendar. Yeah, that's all.
Thanks, councillor Glazier. Other committee meetings this evening? Councillor Ward.
Yep. The conservation commission met on the 14th. They renewed their membership to the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions. There was a proposed contract from Martin Forestry for Wigan Farm for 10K that would be covered by grant and to, and this would be, first, at the end of November, they're going to take up the old boardwalk that's in Wigan Farm, and as volunteers put some new ones down, that'll all be covered by grant and by volunteer work. And there was some discussion about something that's going to be coming up tonight, the railroad easement. There were some concerns about what happens if it is given up and if the landlord doesn't maintain it and damages, and it damages parts of the town, will landlord be responsible, or will we have no, be unable to enforce? And that was the main topic of the night, I think. So that was it.
Thank you very much, councillor Ward. Other committee meetings this evening? Okay. Let me check, let me make sure I'm not missing anything else.
We're now on old business, second reading.
Excellent. All right, we are now on to resolutions and ordinances in the second reading for real this time. And this evening, there are four. And the first on the table is Resolution 2024-2025-20. That is the Ash Swamp Road Bridge Rehabilitation. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, councillor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Dornblatt. At this time, I will turn it over to our town engineer.
Good evening. The request, the request here is approval of the Ash Swamp Road Bridge Rehabilitation. This is for the bridge over the Piscassic River. The abutments are in decent condition, but the bridge deck is deteriorating and needs some rehab. We've had previous requests. We did an evaluation last year. Wright Pierce Engineers took care of that. And the recommendation was to do some rehab work on the deck to bring it up to, bring it in line with the abutments, so we'll extend the useful life of the deck to match the useful life of the abutments. So we'll look to replace the deck, the bridge as a whole in the future, but won't need to do it quite soon. So we can have more time to plan for that. So the Department of Public Works put out a solicitation requesting bids from contractors to do the rehab work, and we received two bids on that. We put it out with two alternatives, a base bid including road closure and detour to keep the time of construction limited and to see if that would save us the money rather than maintaining one lane of traffic and alternating traffic. That just kind of extends the time it takes to get the work done. So we requested the bid to evaluate both options, and the two bids that came in were, one was within our budget for the base bid, one was significantly higher. I think it was approximately 70% higher than the low bid. But we have a base bid that's within our budget and would like to request approval to award that contract to Neil H Daniels, Inc., out of Vermont, to get that work underway and also approve a contract for construction oversight from Wright Pierce Engineers to oversee the work for the deck we have. So the total project cost is, for those two pieces, is $364,650. And we are requesting to use the remaining funds from DOT one-time bridge payment, which will be $89,000, and the remainder will come from the roadway improvement capital reserve fund.
Westonsville Town Engineer, councillor Black.
Is this bid to close the road or keep one lane open?
This is to close the road. That's what's within our budget.
Right.
Keeping the lane, one lane open would be roughly $200, $170,000 more.
More?
Yes.
Other questions for town engineer? You may have missed, said this, and I may have missed it. How long do we anticipate that the road will be closed?
Good question. I believe we are looking at trying to contain it to, within a month, keep it to the shortest amount of time that we can. And that would include, there would be enough space so that there would be passage for emergency vehicles. If needed, it would just be closed to through traffic for that period of time.
Okay. So people that live on the road so they'll get home, they...
Just clarification, it'll be a longer commute home.
Yeah.
And we've, we also worked with the school district to discuss busing issues in that area.
And we are, and just kind of along the lines, we are anticipating this will be done in the spring. This would, we wouldn't start construction now in the wintertime. This would be more productive to do this in the winter if it's warmer. So we will be looking to do this in the spring, and we have a little bit more... more time to line up the detour, make some arrangements for that as well.
Any other questions for the town engineer? Any discussion or comments from councilors on this resolution?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing none, you can call the roll, please.
Council Blaisbrook.
Aye.
Council Matina.
Aye.
Council Dornblad.
Aye.
Council White.
Aye.
Council Blackstone.
Aye.
Council Ward.
Aye.
Council Conley.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. The next resolution on the agenda this evening is Resolution 2024-2025-21, and that is to approve the school impact fees. And so at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Council Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Council Dornblad. Is this to you, Commander?
Yes. We received a letter from the school district requesting a withdrawal of $22,650 from the impact fees. They are going to use it to install hardscape and fixtures in the junior, senior high school exterior courtyard. And the renovated courtyard provides additional instructional space for teachers and students to allow classes to occur outdoors during seasonally time of the year. As unanimously passed by the school board, the council has to vote to approve the withdrawal from the impact fees funded in this currently $279,986 and 27 cents in that fund.
Questions for the town manager or discussion on this resolution? I think it's a great idea. I think that the courtyard has needed some attention for a while, and I'm so happy that the school has the funds available and that they're putting them to this use. Good. Seeing no other discussion, you can call the roll, please.
Council Blaisbrook.
Aye.
Council Matina.
Aye.
Council Dornblad.
Aye.
Council White.
Aye.
Council Blackstone.
Aye.
Council Ward.
Aye.
Council Conley.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. And the third resolution for a second reading today is Resolution 2024-2025-22. That is the purchase release of funds for computer-aided dispatch systems and record management systems. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Council Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dornblad. This time, I'll turn it over to you, Chief Jordan.
Hi there. So we've talked about this in the past. This is to replace our software system at the police station, as well as migrate the data information that we currently have, 30 years of data, over to the new system. This resolution, essentially, we received the grant, we have the money, and this is just you authorizing us to actually make the purchase. We're prepared to make the purchase with the company. They're going to start tomorrow if this goes public tonight. But we've talked about this previously. It was a grant issued to us through Senator Shingin's office, and the total came out to $358,000 for the implementation of the software, as well as the data migration and fees with installing.
Okay. Questions for Chief Jordan or discussion on this resolution? Okay. I just wanted to congratulate the folks on the acquisition of the grant. It's really a tremendous thing. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, you can call the roll, please.
Council Blaisbrook.
Aye.
Council Matina.
Aye.
Council Dornblad.
Aye.
Council White.
Aye.
Council Blackstone.
Aye.
Council Ward.
Aye.
Council Conley.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the fourth resolution in the second reading this evening is Resolution 2024-2025-23, Railroad Avenue Slope Easement Termination. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Council Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dornblad. This time, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good evening. Before you move to the resolution to terminate slope easement along railroad street, genesis of this was during site plan review. It wasn't discovered that the town had an easement there, and then through further title work, postapproval, it was discovered, and the property or applicant requested that either the slope easement be terminated or adjusted. And so as we went through this process of evaluating it, we reached out to the town engineer, also our consultant Underwood Engineer, to evaluate if this easement is needed anymore, or if it is, can be adjusted. Through the conclusions of both our town engineer and also Underwood Engineer, they both found that it's not really needed based on the improvements that were made during site plan review. Further, if it were to be adjusted or dissolved or terminated via the site plan review process, the applicant or the property owner is responsible with opportunity for those improvements that are there until there's something new approved, if it were to change. So stormwater management plan that regulates the slope there, where there's vegetation, retaining wall, if that were ever to be compromised and not repaired and does damage to a public infrastructure like we're going to have, they'd be responsible for that. So I reached out to our legal attorneys. I haven't got a response yet. We're going to transition right now, but, so I haven't got that opinion yet from them. But I think, you know, the resolution is for termination. You know, if the council's not comfortable with that, I think the adjustment, as was initially proposed, but the applicant would be suitable as well because it solves the issue, one, the town's comfortable, still has some sort of regulation or jurisdiction over this easement, two, is adjusted enough where it kind of frees up some restrictions that have been experienced by the property owner. So I'll leave it up to after questions.
Any questions? Council Dornblad?
Just to clarify, so you're suggesting that because of the new development on the site and the approvals that the planning board issued, that the stretch of line, the slope, would actually be maintained in better condition than it has been thus far, and we would have oversight over the continued maintenance of that because of those approvals?
Right. So the integrity of the slope should not be compromised at all based on the approvals that were, approvals that are made to accommodate the building that's there. Again, if those were to fail or be, you know, in derelict condition and it's starting to compromise, town would have jurisdictions to that. If you add compliance with the site plan review, enforcement can be helped carry out via that. But again, where it is to be adjusted, so in addition to, there's going to be a retaining wall there, there's going to be grass slopes, there'll be seeded vegetation, also a sidewalk will be added there too, so that's a further buttress to help with slope integrity. So, you know, Underwood Engineer, you know, they're pretty confident that what is being built, what's proposed and being built, would satisfy the preservation of that slope.
Council Blaisbrook?
A moment ago, you mentioned restrictions that the applicant may be facing because of the current easement. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I can elaborate there. So through title research for long-term financing, I can, that is here, you can speak to it more if you wish, but it's basically, it's a financing issue. The banks don't want, it's basically easements under the building, and that creates title issues.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, thank you. And that goes back to the site plan review. It wasn't picked up, so if it were, it could have been at that time adjusted, which is an oversight.
Council Ward?
Well, you were there at the Conservation Committee, so just so we're clear, by getting rid of this, getting rid of this easement, and the landowner will be responsible for maintaining it, and if anything goes wrong and it starts to damage the town, they will be expected to fix the problem, correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
This was discussed in the planning board meeting, and we, the planning board has no objection to this.
Okay. Any other questions? So one of the things that I'd asked, I think, last week was if somebody could talk to folks in the Conservation Commission, get their assessment of it, to make sure that they're feeling that the preservation of the slope, like all of this looks good, and that will be serving the town sort of, you know, in good stead from an environmental perspective. Have we spoken with the folks in the town Conservation Commission? Council Ward seemed to think there were still some ongoing concerns.
Yeah, I think what their major concern, correct me if I think otherwise, Council Ward, is that they just want to make sure the town's in a good position. So if it were to be adjusted or terminated, the easement, that the town is, you know, not put in a bad position to not correct, you know, be able to do anything, any recourse, get any recourse if something were to fail. So that's what I was trying to follow with the legal counsel, but, you know, just from my understanding of, you know, the site plan review and the enforcement mechanisms, if it were to come out of compliance, I am pretty confident that through code enforcement action and legal remedy could be made, you know, to help fix any type of damages to the town infrastructure, in the case we ever have.
But we're still pending, we haven't yet gotten confirmation from legal counsel on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion on this resolution? Council Dornblad?
It seems to me that the, giving up the easement and utilizing code enforcement as the enforcement mechanism to, if it should be necessary, to maintain the slope is probably a better situation than we're finding ourselves in today.
Cheaper.
And cheaper because there's somebody to do it. So in that way, I believe that we're, you know, this is a good move for the town.
Other questions or discussion, Council Blais?
Is there a reason that we want to vote on it before we hear from legal counsel?
I mean, you definitely take, you know, if you want that legal thing, I think that's, you know, that's justified, but...
Can I answer a word differently?
Yeah.
Is there like a time crunch from the applicant's perspective, or is there a reason that it came before we got?
So not to speak for the applicant, I think the sooner the better, you know, because of the reason why this is being requested, which is, you know, I don't...
Any other discussion by councilors on this? Okay. Seeing none, you can call the roll, please.
Council Blaisbrook.
Aye.
Council Matina.
Aye.
Council Dornblad.
Aye.
Council White.
Aye.
Council Blackstone.
Aye.
Council Ward.
Aye.
Council Conley.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone. At this time, I believe, we'll be moving on to resolutions and ordinance is in the first reading, and this evening, there is one. And this is Resolution 2024-2025-24, Water and Sewer Metal Storage Building. Whereas the water and sewer departments need storage to protect equipment and parts, and whereas HL Patton was the lowest bidder and has completed the installation of the stormwater treatment system and the site work for the project, and whereas the cost for HL Patton to install the foundation and construct the metal storage building is $454,000, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council, that the New Market Town Council authorizes the town manager to enter into an agreement with HL Patton for $454,000 and Underwood Engineers for $54,500 plus $23,000 contingency for unknown tasks associated with the water and sewer metal building project. In addition, the town council authorizes $265,750 from each of the water and sewer capital reserve funds for a total of $531,000 to complete this project. First reading, November 20th, 2024. And that is the only resolution in the first reading this evening. We're on to new business and correspondence. Is there any correspondence to the town council to be written to the record today?
There is none.
Okay. At this time, I will be accepting closing comments by town councilors. Do any councilors have closing comments this evening? Council Dornblad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I never know whether I should report on the coast board meetings under the committees or not, but since it's not technically a town committee, I didn't. Today was, this morning, I participated in the coast board of directors meeting via the phone. I wasn't actually in place. I never really am able to join in person, but this works pretty well. And as I think I've mentioned before, that as a result of the census, New Market, along with Exeter, is no longer a part of any urban area, and therefore is no longer eligible for urban transit funding. This is not effective immediately. I mean, it's obviously immediately as far as the census is concerned, but not as far as the funding stream is concerned. However, as a result of that, both Exeter and New Market are towns, as towns now eligible for a rural funding stream that the DOT hasn't thus far participated in or been able to participate in, so it's a new thing. And Exeter's town representative to the board today suggested that Exeter was quite interested in looking at changing how Coast Route 7 operates. As you will recall, it's an on-demand service, so you call ahead, schedule a ride, and then receive a ride along a certain corridor from coast. There are, you know, restrictions as to the days when the service is operating and some other eligibility restrictions, but generally, it's been quite a growing service. Based on the surveys that were done in support of the revision of the transportation chapter of the master plan, we learned that there's quite an interest in resumption of transit, in making connections to a wider non-vehicular transportation networks, meaning CNJ, being able to reach the train that we're hearing right now. So there is, there's an interest, there is a ridership that is not being served by Coast 7 right now because of the nature of the service. So I invited Exeter's town representative to the board to a future meeting of the transportation, of our transportation committee, to see if there might not be an opportunity for the towns to develop a, some parameters around what we would like a future service to look like. Since DOT has not, this is, would be a new program, we have an opportunity to, you know, to bring, to create something that's as close to what the residents of New Market and its visitors would most benefit from. So I think it's a great opportunity. I just wanted the council to be aware that this is happening, because, you know, while it is an opportunity, there's obviously also a risk that, you know, our funding will altogether go... there's obviously also a risk that, you know, our funding will altogether go away, depending on how DOT chooses to move forward. But I'm quite confident that because of the interest in Exeter and because of the work that we're doing here, that, and, and it being kind of an opportunity for Coast to create something altogether new that they haven't been able to do because it's, it would be a new funding stream for them as well, that we can create a response to, a transit response to, for, for Newmarket residents and visitors that will serve us much better than what we have right now, including, you know, re-establishing connectivity to Durham and thereby to Portsmouth and Dover, which would be, I think, quite a, quite a feat, and I look forward to being able to do that. So, I'll keep you, I'll keep you informed, but I think it's a, it's quite an exciting opportunity for us.
Thank you, Counselor Blackstone.
Thank you.
Counselor Blackstone?
I would just like to say that I absolutely love these cartoon websites, or whatever they're called. I think it's a huge upgrade, and it makes Newmarket look really cool, so I don't know how we did it or what, what the thing was, but...
We'll find out when I just thought of it myself.
Yeah, it's very nice, I really like it.
Yep. I was going to mention that, that I urge the council to take a look at the town website, as well as Facebook, for some of the new things that Tim, it sounds like Tim and his department is doing.
Yeah, I see it on Instagram, but it's, you know, the same, I'm sure it's the same.
Although we did use some copyrighted material that we've got.
We need to fix that. Okay, and we will. Any other comments, comments?
Just for the council, that December 9th will be the presentation of the town's budget to the municipal budget committee here at Town Hall. You're not required to attend, but support is always welcome.
Aye.
I believe seven, Friday, committee?
Budget committee, I mean, I will need to check.
We'll send it on email.
Yeah.
It's, it's disappointing that Jordan couldn't have come up with this problem two weeks in advance, or two weeks ago.
We're not talking about, we're non-public, that was a non-public, we're still public, so we're not.
Okay. December 9th, 7:00 PM, presentation of the budget to the budget committee. Excellent. Other closing comments by Town Council? I have one community, like, community note, Saturday after Thanksgiving, there's a fundraiser for the members of the community, the Bosec family, so anybody could spread the word, that would be, that would be delightful. Okay. I'm seeing no other comments, and if there is no objection, I will consider us adjourned. Thanks to every call, councilors, for their patience with my availability.
We're off.